This meeting of the Antioch Central School District school board is now in session. We have a tobacco policy statement, we have a tobacco policy in place, there is no smoking within one hundred feet of any school building. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. District clerk, if you could please take roll call. Trustee Sherry?
Present.
Trustee Bishop?
Present.
Trustee Story?
Here.
Trustee Wallace?
Present.
Trustee Rabado?
Present.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
Present.
I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? This meeting of the Antioch Central School District school board is now in session. We have a tobacco policy statement, we have a tobacco policy in place, there is no smoking within one hundred feet of any school building. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. District clerk, if you could please take roll call. Trustee Sherry?
Present.
Trustee Bishop?
Present.
Trustee Story?
Here.
Trustee Wallace?
Present.
Trustee Rabado?
Present.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
Present.
I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And... and the employment of a particular person. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Story, comments? All in favor? Thank you. We should be back around six thirty? I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss onset negotiations. May I have a first? And...
May have a first, trustee Bishop, second, trustee Story. Any comments? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. The Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of July fifth, twenty twenty two. May I have a first please? Trustee Wallace. Second, trustee Hemingway Lynch, thank you. Any comments? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Superintendent McLaren will present the communication survey results.
Good evening everyone. Um, I know we have the survey um presentation loaded on board docs so that anyone can follow along. So I put each question on its own slide. So the first um the first slide that shows some results just has to do with where uh students are attending. For those that responded to the survey. Uh, to this question there were one hundred and eighty six responses. And you will note um about eighteen point eight percent of the respondents have children in Woodstock. Uh, thirteen point four in Phoenisha. Twenty eight point five in Bennett, twenty eight point five in the middle school and forty four point six in the high school. And those percentages um track somewhat with our actual enrollment. So in June we had about thirteen point seven percent in Woodstock, twelve point four eight in Phoenisha. Uh, nineteen point four nine in Bennett, sixteen point nine in the middle school and thirty seven point three four in the high school. You will notice the list of placements below that. Those were uh individual placements that respondents added in. So they were not part of our original question, but uh I appreciate that people who have students in other placements also participated in our survey. The next slide um speaks to whether people have internet access at home. I was fairly surprised actually to see that ninety eight point nine percent actually said yes. That was one hundred and eighty four of the hundred and eighty six responses with one saying no and one saying very limited. Um, for those who responded to whether there is internet access on their smartphone, a little less said yes. We had uh eighty five point six percent or one hundred and sixty. With one saying no and twenty six saying uh it sometimes depends on the service area, which I fully understand in this district. I almost am surprised that that wasn't a higher number. The next slide actually has a lot of information on it. Um, so this is the response to the question of um if people currently receive general information. So not grade specific or classroom specific from our school. Um, from the following sources um and where they tend to get their information. And overwhelmingly it appears that email is the source. I didn't notice um I'm not sure if people were differentiating between email and Shout Point. Which is also often an email distribution. And I don't believe it was uh identified whether Shout Point meant email or the phone call. So I'm not sure um if those two should be combined. But overwhelmingly people always receive their information through email. And then the other sources are really uh sort of a mixed bag. I'm not sure uh what specific um specific conclusions can be drawn from that. Um, the Remind app, the Antioa app and Shout Point all were not um regular general information. According to this survey, so um I just think that's just inter- interesting general information. The next slide does deal with grade and classroom specific information from the teacher. And the most effective way to ensure that that information reaches families. And I think this was a consistent theme. The most um likely response for how always receiving that information and the most effective way is email. So um that was interesting. Um, seems that notes sent home was also a positive um response. With sixty four people saying that that is always a good and effective way to ensure the information receives. I'm sorry, reaches the home. Um, and so It seems that people really do appreciate email. That's okay. For um events, sporting, grade level programs, et cetera. People receive information regarding the event, the date, time and place of the event. Um, email again is the sort of preferred source along with notes sent home. And mail is not um certainly not the favored source or the Antioa app. Or Shout Point for that matter uh in terms of specific. certainly not the favored source or the Antioa app or Shout Point for that matter, uh, in terms of specific events. So people do like to receive items such as the monthly newsletters, lunch menus, flyers, um, through email as well, um, with paper copies sent home being the next most popular choice. Um, but out of a hundred and eighty-seven responses, a hundred and sixty-five did prefer email. Um, paper copy sent home was eighty-two out of the hundred and eighty-seven. Uh, the website was next with fifty-four and the app unfortunately continues to come in last. The next slide, um, provides the results for how parents would like to receive information from teachers, schools, or the district office. Um, or how often. So from teachers, uh, weekly seems to be the strong contender here with a hundred and twenty-three of the responses. Um, in terms of the school or building level information, the monthly with weekly as a strong second, monthly receiving seventy-six responses and, um, weekly receiving fifty-nine. District office, uh, again, monthly had the most responses of fifty-eight, but weekly was pretty close with forty-nine. So it seems that people would like some fairly frequent and regular information to come home from the buildings and the district office. In terms of the website, um, people visiting the website for information relating to school activities, events, um, and academic information. So the, the most often chosen, uh, frequency here is a few times a month. We had fifty-six responses or thirty percent of the respondents choosing, uh, a few times a month as how often they visit the website. Less than once a quarter was the next, um, most popular response with thirty responses or sixteen percent. And then once or more a week, um, was right after that with twenty-seven responses or fourteen percent. Um, so it does seem that people do go to our website. And that leads into the next question, um, the following questions which are specific to the Antioa website. Um, information being available out of a hundred responses. No, not a hundred responses, I'm sorry. Out, I don't have the total responses, I'm so sorry. There were eighty-four responses that said the website was good for information being available. Seventy-three said it needs improvement. I think from this chart, it shows that we are pretty split in, um, how people feel about our website. Information being found easily, needs improvement, were ninety-eight, but good were sixty-four responses. Uh, the overall impression is pretty well split. Seventy-eight said it was good and seventy-seven said it needs improvement. Um, so I'm, I'm a little surprised by that. I thought more people would, um, feel that it needed improvement, um, in a much more dramatic way. Social media preferences, I think this sort of tracks with what we have seen. Um, Facebook is far and away the most preferred social media platform for our district with a hundred and thirteen of the hundred and eighty-two responses. Followed pretty closely, um, with Instagram and I don't use social media being almost tied at fifty-seven and fifty-five. So either it's Facebook and Instagram or it's no social media. Twitter, uh, there were only eight respondents who were using or utilizing Twitter. So, uh, I think those were really interesting. I did share this with Holly Brooker, who is our, um, BOSI's Public Relations Supervisor, who is gonna come to our next meeting. Um, and what I'm hoping that we can discuss with Holly is, uh, how to move forward with the website, how to move forward with communications, how to move forward rolling out our logo. Um, now that that has been decided that we're gonna move forward with that and what a rebranding campaign would look like. Um, also on board docs are the text responses to the last three questions that were on the survey. And those were, um, really worthwhile reads. So the questions that we asked people to respond to were, um, tell us what works for you about our current communications. And I think email was a very strong response. People really appreciate receiving information by email. Um, and next we asked what doesn't work for you. And I think we got a lot of feedback in terms of, um, the frequency and quality of communication that has been, um, happening. And there are a lot of people who want better communication, so, um, that gave us some things to aim for. And then, um, tell us what else you'd like us to know. So I think, uh, the document that's up there is fairly lengthy. I really appreciate and wanna thank the community for providing all of that feedback. I think people really, um, took the board's survey very seriously and took their time and really, um, gave answers that were thoughtful and useful. So, uh, is there anything else that the board would like to touch on with this? I think, I'm sorry, I did wanna just mention, I would love to sit down with the Communications Committee and go over this, uh, more in depth and, and see where the Communications Committee would like to go with it. Uh, I think this was a great first survey. I don't know if that necessarily means it's the last survey. There might be different, um, paths that the board and the Communications Committee want to take to find out more information. I think this is a great starting place, but there must be more that we can figure out as we roll out and try and create a good communications plan.
Thank you, Superintendent McLaren. I really appreciate that you went back through and added in all of the numbers to make the bar graph, uh, a little easier to read, especially when it's really tiny. Do any of my colleagues have questions for the superintendent?
When do we think that the, um, uh, communications expert from BOSI's is going to be joining us?
She's actually scheduled to come to our next meeting.
Trustee Lynch?
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, and, you know, I just wanted to say, I think, um, it's just so heartening to see the responses, as you said, and, and, um, and the, and the, um, especially on the, the written notes, the narrative, I thought that there was some really wonderful insights here. And, and, um, you know, one parent specifically talked about the type of, you know, communication and the communication also helps, um, you know, really, uh, under, uh, gives an impression of, of how a, a system works, right? So I think it's really important and there was a lot of, um, conversation about, um, or a lot of notes here about trust and transparency and being, you know, um, not using jargon and not being complex and helping, you know, really think about two-way communication. And, and so I just, I think there was a lot here for the committee to take forward and, and I'd welcome, um, that, that opportunity. Um, the one question I had for you was about, um, Shout Point. And I, I do just wanna make the point that I think most people don't know what that is or by name. So we're calling it Shout Point on a survey and nobody knows, not nobody, but several people wouldn't know what that means. And so for those who don't know, Shout Point is an e- a, a communication system that the district uses um, to communicate those broad mass messages, right? And it's essentially, um, tied, as I understand it, to, um, the registration system as well. So when you register your child for school, you can set your preferences for whether you prefer email, text, or a phone call. And many folks noted that that's why they get three emails if you have three children like me, right? Every time there's a mass message. Um, but I just wanted to, to make that clear for folks and then ask you, um, about whether we could learn more about why we use that system, that particular system, and what it would take to adjust it or make adjustments or even consider a different system. Is it so intertwined with our registration system that it would be a huge project to, to change that? Or, or what are some of the constraints that we should be thinking about, um, if we wanted to, to think about a different system? So that we could really maximize, particularly the emails, which I saw here as being really favorable for many families.
Right. So, um, I would say Shout Point is a, a, a part of Infinite Campus, which is our student management system. I think if what we want to do is analyze the comments and try and pinpoint what the issues are with the way people are receiving Shout Point, I would want to look and see if we can make adjustments to the system we have so that it serves our community better before we think about changing because it is very, I mean, it, it is part of our system. So when you have a child and we need to send a message to all of the families with children in one particular building or in one particular grade or in one particular geographic location, it's in that system already. And so that's, um, and it pulls all the contact information directly from the student information. So when we send out a Shout Point phone call, it immediately calls all the numbers that are in our student management system. And that's the system where having, having one, um, point of reference for all that information is really important so that everyone has the same contact information and we don't have to update it in Infinite Campus. And then if we have another system for communications, then we, we would have to make sure that everything gets duplicate, um, revisions if there are changes to be made. But I think if, if what we need to do is look and see how we can refine it and have it better serve us, then we should do that.
Yep, agreed. Thank you.
Trustee Story?
Um, this was a thought that I had last time, um, that when we were discussing this survey, that, uh, the timing of this survey, I'm, uh, when we put this out, we only got a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty-six responses. And to make a decision when we have about eleven hundred kids, K-12, on a hundred and eighty-six responses, that's, hmm, can't find the right word, but a little unsettling. I'd, I, I may wanna suggest that we send this out to our parents again in the fall and get more responses of this. Um, because to send this back to the Communication Committee with a hundred and eighty-six responses, that's, that's only a hundred and eighty-six homes that we're discussing. We're not talking about the majority of them. And this is the communication, so this is something that I wanna bring up to the board that we may want to put this out again and hopefully get more responses.
I think that I would ask, um, what our percentage, our, our rate of return generally is when we do surveys like this. Um, and it's something that we can talk about maybe again, uh, with Holly. Because I, I'm not sure. I, I agree with what you're saying, Valerie. I, I'm just not sure what we normally get. Um, I don't actually think that it's much more than ten percent. And that is something that we should talk to Ms. Brooker about is, you know, what, what can we do differently so that the surveys, which are vitally important to the work that we do, actually are responded to? Because we generally don't get great feedback when we do these, but they are really necessary. So maybe we could look at that and see what our response rate generally is. If this is way lower or much different than what we normally have, then, then we should look at whether or not we want to re-in, reinterpret and, and tweak it, I would say, change it maybe based on what we've learned and send it back out. But at the same time, allow the Communications Committee to begin the process and start kind of parsing through the data that they have learned, um, and the people who have taken the time to, to respond because, you know, they, they put a lot of effort into it. So maybe we could do both things at once. Sarah?
Yeah, the only thing I'll say is that, um, I really see a huge opportunity to, um, to communicate effectively from the start of the school year because that's when so many families are, you know, really paying attention. Just, I mean, can't tell you how many messages I got just this week because teachers were announced, right? Like, I mean, people are really now focused on that communication, recognizing, um, the opportunities in the lower schools to have the, uh, back-to-school nights is another great opportunity. So I'm just wanna be mindful, I hear you, Val, but I, I just wanna be mindful that we, if we do wanna help create some, you know, some new ways of, of communicating, there's a really important window that's right in front of us to do that. And so I wondered if, um, my colleagues on the Communications Committee might consider having a meeting, you know, sooner rather than later, um, to, to take some of the ideas forward that came, um, out of this survey.
I, I would say that, um, m- maybe we could have like a micro-meeting right after hearing from, from the BOSI's expert, just because it's gonna inform a lot of what we do. So maybe that would be, uh, you know, an opportunity, taking that information and acting on it quickly.
I think that, uh, that would be a good idea. I'd like to hear what Holly has to say. Um, and I'd also like to include Superintendent McLaren in that conversation because she has, you know, all the background information on Infinite Campus and why, you know, we're using the system that we are using currently. Um, I do agree, um, with trustee Lynch about, you know, there's no time like the present and, uh, and, you know, September is right around the corner and, and parents are gonna be looking for all that important information. Um, uh, I think a lot of that information comes in different ways than, um, you know, emergency information or, um, you know, COVID updates, things like that, that are happening kind of in the spur of the moment almost. Um, but the, you know, the, the September information is really, really important. Um, I don't know if, uh, if anybody else has anything to add to that? Communication Committee meeting right after the next board meeting?
Don't wait a second. Don't we have a retreat the next morning? So you're not going to wanna be dealing with a board meeting? Okay, so, 'cause some-
Retreat is on the eighteenth. The, yeah, so you'll have a day. Um, but also keeping track of what trustee Story said, which I, which I think is really important is that, you know, our buy-in to this survey was not huge. Um, and perhaps that's indicative of a larger problem. And, um, I think that if the Communications Committee could also kind of think about that, you know, are there incentives? Are there ways to incentivize people to participate so that we can have a better buy-in? So that we can have a, a better idea of what most, in my work, I find that the people who respond are generally always the people who respond. Um, and it's reaching the people who don't respond, which is vitally report, important. So, you know, I always answer the surveys. Um, I'm sure Valerie does too. I'm sure that Megan and Sarah did as well. Um, David probably did as well, so that's five of us here, um, of the hundred and eighty-five. So, you know, I think that we should be looking at that and then also looking at, if there's a way to tweak the survey, what else information we want to gather from people after you guys have met and spoken to Ms. Brooker and seeing then if we want to do another survey and if there's value in that. Anybody else? Questions? Comments? Assistant Superintendent Stephanie Laffin will present the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three District Comprehensive Improvement Plan.
Good evening, everyone. So, um, the district comprehensive plan, um, if you guys notice as we begin the presentation, the DSEP, we do have a lot of jargon, sometimes an abbreviation that goes around. So in the, in the presentation, I tried to be clear on that. So the DSEP is the District Comprehensive Improvement Plan, and it incorporates what we call the SEP. And the SEP is the, or also known as the ESEP, um, is the School Comprehensive Education Plan. So if you see kind of in the visual, I tried to show how the district plan really wraps around and supports, uh, our middle school SEP plan. And, um, our middle school team will be presenting at our next board meeting to talk about their SEP, um, plan and also, uh, um, in response to some questions about what their implementation of their co-teaching model has been like over the past year and to talk a little bit more about that. So that, um, they'll be joining us next, uh, board meeting for that. So, um, also, why did, why do we have to make a DSEP? Why did we have to create it? next, uh, board meeting for that. So, um, also, why did, why do we have to make a DSEP? Why did we have to create it? And, uh, in the spring of twenty twenty, due to some low test scores on the eighteen, nineteen middle school state assessments, um, Auntie Our Middle School, uh, was required to submit plans to the State Ed Department on how we would support students' success. And this was, um, on a particular subgroup. So we submitted plans, uh, the district submitted plans in the twenty twenty-one year, twenty-one, twenty-two year, and now for the twenty-two, twenty-three year. Currently, um, we are, there, there has not been any changes from New York State on, uh, whether someone moves on or off the list. They've had things on a long-term pause due to COVID. So we are kind of spinning, eh, an infinity on this cycle and, uh, that, hopefully that will come to a change at some point um, when New York State reclassifies their data. But until then, we are required to submit these plans. And that is in response to the twenty eighteen federal law that, um, ESA Act. And you guys can also see, um, the DSEP Committee. It's comprised of our, uh, Shared Decision Making Committee. The names of our, um, team are listed. And when we met this year, we spent time reviewing the district's visions, values, and aspirations, which are supposed to be really tied deeply to the plan. Talking about the priorities we, uh, named last year in the plan, considered how effective they were. Um, evaluated the impact of COVID nineteen, which in our reflections and discussions on how effective we were on our twenty-one, twenty-two plan, certainly when that plan was written in the summer of last year, we were all much, we were very optimistic and I don't think we understood, probably no one understood the impacts that COVID would have, um, far-reaching into the next school year. So, um, that was an interesting reflection to look at where we were and then thinking about, um, all of the impacts that ended up, uh, impacting that. We considered the, a draft of the, uh, commitments that our middle school SEP team have made and reviewed some local data and thought about how we as a district could not only support the middle school, but also continue or shift, um, our district priorities that we identified last year. Which leads into our, uh, first district priority, which, uh, we named as increasing mental health support to students and families and, uh, SEL or Social Emotional Learning Support to students, um, particularly around responsible use of social media. This, uh, was in response, um, in support, in support of the district's mission, mission and vision themes that we picked up from our middle school student interviews. The SEP team, uh, was asked to do, uh, part of writing the SEP is to interview middle school students and collect data from them on what their experience is. Um, and the SEP team does an equity self-reflection process. So the themes that emerged from that as well, as well as the impact of COVID nineteen. And our second, uh, district priority, this, um, was also a district priority last year. Supporting educators as they work to focus on equitable access to high expectations and rigorous instruction in an inclusive environment for all students. Particularly with the expansion of the co-teaching model and implementation of multi-tiered systems of support. So this, uh, is something that, um, was fully implemented in the middle school last year. And we wanted this priority to focus on the continued support, um, not only at the middle school, but thinking about a continuum and what that looks like to, um, spread that out to opportunities for all of our students and making sure that our students, um, at Bennett are prepared as they move up into the middle school, into that model, and making sure all of those supports are in place. Um, again, the priority supports the mission and vision themes from our middle school interviews and our equity self-reflection process. Commitments made by this, uh, middle school team. Again, that was one of their main commitments, which you'll hear about next meeting, and our impacts of COVID. And then finally, the district's third priority was supporting educators as they work to strengthen professional learning communities. Address rigor, instructional rigor, cultural responsiveness, achievement disparities, and student engagement. And the middle school implemented this, this PLC model fully this year. And we wanted to continue to support that work and think about how we might, um, look to support that and maybe even expand that in some way and support professional development and opportunities for our staff to enhance and engage in that. And again, supporting the mission and vision, what we heard about successes from the middle school interviews and teachers as well, um, equity self-reflection, the middle school team and the impacts of COVID. And then finally, our next steps, uh, after developing this, um, the DSEP will be posted on the website. Um, we will receive funds from New York State to implement this in the form of school improvement grants to support each priority. Uh, the middle school SEP plan, we'll, we'll hear about that from Principal O'Connor next, uh, Board of, um, Ed Meeting. She'll also have some team members here with us, with her. And, uh, the SEP, when that is finalized, the Middle School School Improvement Plan, that'll be posted on the website. Um, there are summer curriculum work opportunities. There's been work happening all summer long regarding that. Uh, professional learning, continuing those opportunities. And most important, providing those engaging, enriching learning experiences to support the success of all of our students. Any questions?
Does anyone have questions for Super, for Assistant Superintendent Laffin? No? I just have one question, um, regarding the middle school interviews. Can you just tell us a little bit more about that, like what that process was like and, and what kind of questions they were asked and how that went down?
So, um, that was designed at the middle school level at the end of the year. The conversations that they had, I believe they, I believe they did this ones in social studies classes. As I remember, different small groups. Um, we also did a survey that they, take that from student survey information that the middle school did three times during the year. So this incorporates their survey responses as well.
That's excellent. I love that they were included in the process. Thank you for putting this all together and sharing it with us. I'm looking forward to hearing, uh, Ms. O'Connor and her team report in two weeks. Anybody else? No? Okay, then the superintendent will report district news.
Hello again.
Sorry, do you have a question? Sorry, the, being at the end, I'll have to, I'll get better about waving. Um, just wanted to, I just ask a question about the Shared Decision Making Committee. Um, and just curious if that's specific for the DSEP or if that's a committee that's, um, that works on a host of different issues for the school?
Uh, that would be, uh, sort of a standing committee.
Okay.
I don't know what the Shared Decision Making Committee worked on last year. Um, in previous years, we have done things like, um, redo the hiring process, um, reestablish the shared decision-making plan. Um, I believe years ago, the later start times started with the Shared Decision Making Committee. Uh, I think there are a lot of things that would be appropriate. Um, I think potentially, uh, when we start to talk about the code of conduct, we would bring in, you know, we have a district shared decision-making committee, but there are building-level committees as well. Um, so the building, each building utilizes their committee, um, as well. And I think that building committees may actually be utilized more frequently, um, than the district-wide committee. Okay, so, um, in terms of board news, I know I shared this with the board, um, in the update and there are likely to be additional discussions about it, but there have been some discussions, uh, about a change in practice regarding cellphone use at the secondary level, uh, in September. So, um, in trying to sort of get a, a real sense of what the plans are, it was a little difficult to arrange meetings because, uh, the summer is, has, has been, I think, a catch-up on vacation for some administrators who were not able to take vacation for the past couple of years. So we've, we've, uh, finally gotten together. Uh, Assistant Superintendent Laffin was able to meet with both secondary principals, um, to sort of better understand the issues and the plans for when our students return in September. And I think people who have had students in these buildings in the past would recognize that the two buildings have historically handled cellphones differently. And they are kind of planning to go back to that model this fall. So the plans, as I understand them for September in the middle school, uh, historically, the middle school students have not been allowed to utilize cellphones during the school day. So when students first returned to the building during the pandemic, um, people may remember that it was a very small percentage of our student body in the middle school who was coming in each day and they were very isolated. Um, and they were not allowed to sit together during lunch. They were not allowed to talk. So during this time, um, and during the school day, the staff and the principal decided to allow for middle school students to, uh, use their cellphones in the building. In anticipation of a return to a more traditional school year in September, the principal and staff have opted to plan to revert to the previous practice of not allowing the use of cellphones during the school day in the middle school. So that's just in grades seven and eight. In the high school, uh, it's a little different because it is a different age group. So the high school is planning on allowing cellphone use during the day, but not in class. As many trustees are aware, there were a number of issues related to cellphone use last year. Uh, and the faculty had requested more structure around the use of cellphones. So if a student uses their cellphone during class, they will be asked to, um, place their phone in a caddy for the duration of the class period. The cellphones would then also, um, I'm sorry, not also, the cellphones would be allowed to be utilized in the hall and at lunch, just not in class. Teachers will not be, um, sort of asking students to produce their cellphones when they walk into the room. There's gonna be no, um, you know, no hand over your phone, I know you have it type thing. Um, but the guidelines will be included in the student handbooks and in the welcome back letters. And I think the, um, principals would also, um, like to meet and talk about possibly doing a letter just specifically on this topic from the district, um, prior to the welcome back letters, even so that people have a better chance to digest this, uh, change in practice. Um, the Town of Woodstock, on a completely different topic. Town of Woodstock is applying for a grant through NYSERDA to study the viability of community heat pumps. The grant is in an amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and the town did ask for the district to supply a letter of support for this study, uh, for the, to be included in the grant application. The letter of support does not obligate the district to any specific course of action, but will increase the town's chances of being awarded the grant to conduct the study. Um, if the grant is awarded, the firm, uh, hired by the town will conduct the study of a renewable heating, cooling, and electricity generation for Woodstock with a focus on the central hamlet. And one of the reasons they felt that a letter of support from the district would be so useful is that we have one of the very largest, um, spaces that requires heating in the Town of Woodstock. So, uh, I did provide them with that letter, so hopefully they will let us know, um, how that goes and if they are awarded that grant. Um, and so at that point, we can take whatever results come from that study and we can include those in our own process and have our facilities committee look at that and see if any of the things they're recommending work for us as a district to be implemented. Um, and how that will work with other programs that we have within our district. Um, so as, as I have just recently returned to the district, um, although I do have a lot of, uh, well-established relationships, there are two town supervisors that I have not yet met. So I have, um, reached out to them to request a meeting and I've let them know about the quarterly meetings that I schedule each year with all of the town supervisors. Um, and often Assistant Superintendent Leclerc, uh, participates in those meetings frequently. Um, and then by invitation, our Director of Facilities will attend, our Director of Transportation will attend. And we found that, um, much like our, uh, quarterly PTA summits, these meetings for the town supervisors ended up being very useful for us to build a collaborative relationship. But the town supervisors often remarked that this was the only time that they all got together and were able to talk. So, um, it was really interesting. After the first few meetings, they seemed to look forward to it. Um, so I have reached out to them and, uh, asked them if they would, uh, would like a meeting with me. I would like an individual meeting with the supervisors that I don't have a relationship with yet. I'm happy to go to their boards, but I also let them know that we would like to start scheduling those meetings. Our Summer Skills Academy is wrapping up this week. Uh, this program has run very smoothly this year. We are so very grateful to the faculty and staff who opted to spend this time with our students and to Principal Bono for being the administrator of the academy. Um, walking through the hall, the kids are really actively engaged. They are all very happy to be there. Um, and they've also been able to, along with having a wonderful learning opportunity, they've had some fun events along the way. Uh, I think they've found that it was a really great program and they've enjoyed their time with us this summer. So, uh, it'll actually be a little sad to not be able to run up to Bennett and see kids for the next month. Uh, and I also just wanted to note, um, at the last meeting, we approved a relationship, uh, an ICR with parents as partners for a webinar series, for participation in a webinar series. And I just wanna be very clear that the dates of the webinar series were not up to us. We are not the only district that is participating. And so there are conflicts with our meetings. Um, these are not dates that we have the option of moving because it's a multiple district initiative. The webinars will be recorded. Um, parents can interact afterward if they want to watch the recording and then, uh, have feedback or comments or questions with the provider. But I just wanted to note that unfortunately, we didn't have control over the dates of those webinars and they are not just for us, uh, dedicated. They are for multiple districts. So, um, I just want everybody to be aware of that. Questions?
Does anyone have questions for Superintendent McLaren?
Given the, um, the new, I think, concentration or focus on security in the post-Uvalde world that we live in, um, are middle school students who, um, going to have access to phones in their bags? Um, or they, is it a policy that, um, that they're not gonna be allowed to have phones because, uh, uh, on them? Because, uh, obviously, you know, there's a con- a concern about, you know, in an emergency situation, being able to contact our children?
Um, it is my understanding that there's not going to be any, um, I don't, any searches, any, you know, the expectation is if you have a phone, we will not see it during the day. Uh, I don't think anyone is going to go through people's, um, private belongings, bags, pockets and say, hand me that phone. Um, but the expectation is certainly in the middle school that they will not be taking them out and utilizing them during the day.
Superintendent McLaren, can you just make sure that, can you clarify that with Principal O'Connor and bring that to us at the next meeting? I, I think it's important that we understand truly what the parameters are, um, and make sure that there are no, that, that if there are consequences, that parents are aware of them. Um, personally, I wouldn't be very upset by that. So I'd love to know what the outcome really is gonna be for that.
Of course. I will absolutely confirm exactly that expectation regarding whether, as long as a student is not using their phone, nobody's going to go through their bag and take a phone. But I will, I will clarify that.
Thank you. Yeah. And, and I do think that there may be some of our IEP students who actually have the ability to use their phones. So I- So I I wanna make sure that we have something in place for those students as well, so that there is no um. That there's no issues around students who are allowed to have their phones and and being spoken to by professionals in the school.
I'll just add that for some children, it's going to be a rude awakening, uh especially during lunchtime. And I just wonder if there's any ways to um. Uh y- you know, get them to speak to each other again. I think that's gonna be a challenge, and is there any way to encourage it?
Well, you know, uh as I reflect back on pre-pandemic lunchtimes, um especially. Yeah, during, I I I was just gonna say especially in middle school, but that's not even true. Um there are often very fun activities at lunchtime, there are sometimes lip syncs, there are some, there are. They do really try and engage the students during lunch and the students who were in middle school during the pandemic. Don't have that frame of reference, um but yes, they will be encouraged to speak to each other. And you know, I feel bad for the that lost time that the kids missed out on that lunchtime. As a really great decompression and release in terms of being able to socialize and interact. And you're right, I think, I think that's really important. And this middle school faculty is a very engaging um faculty and lunchtime is often. I wouldn't say it's loud and raucous, but it is definitely an active period of time for our kids with that. Um with that faculty and and I'm sure that uh that can be a focus this year.
If it's, if it's a, if it's helpful at all in the communication of the, of this um for parents, I think it's also important and I'm happy to help. Um it's a interest of mine as well, but there's a lot of actually new studies that just came out from the National Institute of Health. Showing the impact of um phones and screen time on both elementary and middle school years. So if it's useful to share some of that information with parents to help them communicate that with and with students, obviously, but um with but with families. Um I'm happy to help support that and I appreciate the conundrum that the middle school principal is in. And I'm happy personally to know that there's this step taking place.
Do we have any other questions for the superintendent? Okay, the, is there any board district news? The board will report district news, does anyone have news to share? Trustee Story?
Um yes, trustee. Oh my god, I was, I thought blanked on your last name. Uh trustee Ramondo and I um uh attended the Rural Schools Conference that was held out in Cooperstown. At the middle, at the beginning of July after reorg. Um my notes are on my other thing that I do not have access on my new laptop. So we'll, I'll discuss those at a future meeting, we'll bring back some of the information at a future meeting. But it's, it's something that um they may be changing it next year, they may be moving it from the Ota Saga. To a different facility, they're not sure yet because. Um because of um uh we've outgrown the the facility there. And they're also talking about doing a a wintertime conference that um could be in Lake Placid. Saratoga, or I forget where the other thing is in December, so there'll be more information coming.
Anyone else? Trustee Ramondo?
The Rural Schools Conference was a wonderful experience, just so you guys know. There was a lot to take away, a lot of what they covered. That I found the most powerful was communications, and so it's not just us who are feeling this way. They gave a lot of suggestions and I am excited to hear from Holly to see if it it matches up. And one of the other things that I found powerful. Was we speak about social emotional learning and the supports for our students. But there was a very big push for supporting mental health and self-care for our staff. And I'm very interested to know what we do for our staff members in that way. And what they were speaking about as well as like the staff members would come to these trainings and they'd say, well, what can we take back to our kids? And there had to be a moment of pause to say, this, this is just for you. This is just to care for you so that you are, know that you're supported, that we're all here together. And that it matters, how you're feeling matters too. So I think if we wanna support our kids, we support our staff. And I'm just interested to know as we move forward and what information can be given to us, to just know what we're doing for our staff. And if there's initiatives that are out there to bring people in to support the mental health needs of our staff as well. That's it, and I had a great time.
I'm really glad that you both had the opportunity to attend, um of all the conferences that were offered. That to me is is one of the most fascinating ones and and I'm hoping to be able to make it if they do it. Unless you're held hostage. Um does anyone else have board district news to report? I would just add that um Superintendent McLaren has agreed to attend Olive Day. And um sit in a booth with whoever else would like to join her, um looking at you. Looking at you, Ms. McLaren. It's the tenth, yeah, it's September tenth. If Ms. Leclerc wants to spend some time with the frog jumping contest perhaps?
I just wanna be clear, it's not a dunk booth.
It, there, right.
It's just a booth.
Superintendent McLaren is not going to be in the dunking booth, um although she may bring a frog for the frog jumping contest. I. Cow, the the chicken. I would encourage um board members who are able to attend to please attend. And if we need to, we can, you know, do a sign-up sheet so that Superintendent McLaren is not there all day by herself. But um I think it would be an excellent way for board members to start meeting some people in the local community and representing. Um I'm gonna do my best to be there, but I am working on the tenth. So anybody who would like to attend, you know, please let me know and uh yeah, I would love to. I'd love to have people there with Superintendent McLaren so that she is not there by herself. But um I think it's an excellent way and Olive Day gets a huge turnout. And I think it's a a good way for us to move forward with our new administration um and starting a new school year. Anybody else for district news? And uh thank you to Superintendent McLaren for offering to do that. The board will acknowledge the public be heard comments from the last meeting. Um Natalie Acker Raymond spoke to us regarding home schooled children and access to sports. Um I do not believe that we have anyone signed up for public be heard. We do not have anyone for public be heard, um just a reminder to the public that if you can't make the meeting, you can send a letter in ahead of time. That we will read during public be heard. Do we want to take a break? Alright, we're gonna take five minutes and we'll come back. At seven forty-five. Item ten point zero one, approve the safety plan. The Board of Education hereby is, hereby approves the district statewide safety plan for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. May I have a first, please? Trustee Story, second? Trustee Bishop? Any comments? Questions? No, all in favor? Alright, that's unanimous. The NISBA liaison, ten point zero two, the Board of Education hereby approves, blank, to be the Board of Education liaison for NISBA. NISBA encourages each district to appoint an advocacy liaison. This position provides a direct link to NISBA's advocacy efforts. An advocacy liaison is important for sharing legislative information with their board and helps lawmakers understand the challenges that each district faces. Give your district a direct contact to all things advocacy. The perks of being an advocacy liaison. First, to receive invitation to lobby days and district federal legislative visits, board member volunteerism, a newsletter specifically for advocacy liaisons. Opportunities to attend NISBA advocacy events with board approval. Detailed information to brief your board on NISBA advocacy activities. No prior experiences necessary, just enthusiasm for advocating on behalf of your board and NISBA. Many first-term board members find it's a great way to learn more about NISBA and our legislative priorities. Long-term board members appreciate the opportunity to get involved in a new way. I was the NISBA advocate last year and uh I would love to turn that over to someone else, is there anyone who is interested? Anybody? Sarah? Yeah, awesome, okay, so trustee Hemingway Lynch, Amanda will be our. Do, I don't, do we need to vote on it? May I have a first on trustee Hemingway Lynch? Trustee Ramondo, a second, trustee Bishop? Comments, questions? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you Sarah for doing that. So we wanted to have a conversation about um about our committee work. And identifying the charge for each of the three specific board committees. That would be policy, communications and legislative action. Um I think it might also be appropriate with the board's agreement to um appoint a chair for each of those. So that there is a point person um to help organize and set the meetings. Um do we wanna start with policy committee?
Um usually the chairs are appointed and discussed at each meeting, each committee.
I think what I saw.
Turns around and decides who is the chair, that's the way we've always done it at facilities and audit committee.
Right, those, but those are not board committees, these would be, the, these are just straight board committees. We can do it however you guys want, I just thought, I watched the communication around getting the communication committee together and um. And I think it would be helpful for each of these committees to have a chair to kind of direct things back and keep things kind of organized. Um you guys are, we are welcome to set that in committee or we can set it tonight, whatever you guys prefer.
I'd prefer to do that in committee because it's the committee's decision. That committee's decision who their chairperson is and stuff like that.
Right, well, it would have, it would be their decision either way, whether we do it tonight in public or if we do it um.
But there's other committee, there's other community members that are on these committees.
On communications, legislative action and policy?
There can be, yes.
But there aren't currently.
But we have to do it uniform for all of the committees.
Those are not board committees, but I I hear you, but those are not board committees, um but let's move. Those are not board committees, but I, I hear you, but those are not board committees. Um, but let's move on to setting the charge.
How are these not board committees? These are all board committees.
They are not, they're not, but they are not exclusively board committees. These are, these three committees are exclusively board committees.
But also the superintendent's on the committee too.
Yeah. Okay.
The, you know, the superintendent is a standing member of all board committees, so that's-
Right, but she would not be the chair of the under any of those committees.
I understand that, but let the committees themselves decide.
They're going to. I was just saying we could do it tonight, the committees could do it tonight, they could choose a chairperson or the committees can do it in their committees. I thought it would be good to do it in public, but we can certainly do it as, in your own committees. Let's move forward with, yeah, go ahead.
I, I just, I'm a little confused because um I, I've, you know, I've only been uh on the board for a year and I, I was a member of the policy committee and the audit committee. And um, in the audit committee, um, the superintendent was invited. She was an invited guest, but she didn't always come.
Audit committee, Mary St- when she was there, she was always there. The superintendent is always a standing invite on all board committees.
Okay.
A standing member of them. This is, this has been the procedure that has been prior to me being on the board. The superintendent, you can't have a committee without the superintendent because the board has to interact with the superintendent. The board doesn't have powers to do anything. It's a superintendent. We give the superintendent the task to do and then she does it.
Right. But I do, I do recall meetings where we did not have a superintendent at those meetings.
She may have been out of, out, but she, she's always been at all facilities meetings and other meetings also that I have been over the years.
Superintendent McLaren, could you, could you clarify for us what your understanding is?
Um, yes, I think I do participate in all committees that I can. Um, often, I believe that um more consistently Assistant Superintendent Leclerc uh attended all audit committee meetings. I do attend everyone I can. Um, I don't recall how the charges or how the chairs were designated in the past years. But if you have I, I would not be the, necessarily the chair of say the policy committee or the, certainly not the legislative action committee or the communications committee, cause that is the, the board. I would certainly be in attendance. Um, and in terms of charges, sometimes we work on the charges here at the board table and sometimes the committees kind of meet and create the charge they would like and bring it back and the board um kind of affirms it, I think I, do I remember that correctly? So, that can go either way.
Or just, I was just gonna say trustee Sherry, if it helps just to get the first meetings organized and then, you know, we can certainly, I'm, I'm all in favor of just appointing that chair for these three, at least.
Yeah, these are the, the only three committees that we're looking at to um, to have a charge for and will, that will need a chairperson, um, because they are board-driven committees. And um, my thought was not for the board as a whole to choose a chair for the committees, but for the committee members who are present to do that for themselves. However, we can drop that part and talk about charge and whether or not we want to do that at the board table or whether or not you would like to do that within your committees. Does anyone have an opinion? What is preferable? I, I, I mean, I think that my concern was that um, we are all quite busy and communication over the last couple of weeks has been challenging. Um, we have not all been able to coordinate effectively and that's incredibly important in order for us to move forward as a cohesive board. So, I would like to see um, the ability for each of these committees to come together in an effective way to set a chairperson and to set a charge. I'm happy to suggest that we do that together or to do it individually, whatever everyone else agrees to.
Well, for the charges, the whole board has to discuss that, to give the charges to the individual committees. But choosing a chairperson, that is up to the individual committee. As a board committee, we have to give them the charge of what to do, the whole committee, the whole board mi-
Did the, the, don't the committees sometimes come up with the work they want to do and bring it back to the board and the board discusses it and then affirms it?
Yes, that, but that has to be done, the whole board has to. The committee can't just take an idea and do whatever they want with it and then come back to the board.
Right, so they would come up with what they, the work they intend to do or they think would be helpful and then bring that back to the board and have that formalized as a charge?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, um, so I, I would just propose then that um, at the next meeting of the communications committee, we can discuss some potential charges to bring back to the board at, at whatever the next meeting might be and maybe nominate a, a committee chair among, among the group. And um, and the same goes for the policy committee that I know we have, we've already got dates established and I think that um, you know, we could, we could do the same thing in the policy committee and bring some suggestions for charges back to the board to discuss in the next board meeting.
So then we will do the same with leg- with legislative action. Um, why don't I send out an email, seeing if we can coordinate?
Well, I think Amanda did a great job at just putting together the commit, I mean-
So Amanda, are you comfortable doing that? Can you send out an email asking to set up a policy? A meeting, a committee, um, a communications committee meeting and also a legislative action? And if you could just include the members of the, of each of those committees rather than the board in its entirety?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's not a problem.
Why is facilities could keep getting? Why, but why aren't we discussing that either? That's um, cause that's also a board committee.
Facility, I don't, is facilities a board committee or a district committee that has a board member on it?
It's no, it's a, it's a per policy, it's a board committee. Because we've, as the board has given the policy of um, the board, we, the, the board is supposed to visit all the plants, every single thing, and by policy, we have given it to the facilities committee to do it. It's part of S C D requirements.
I thought facilities was a district committee with a board person.
It's always been a, as long as I've been here, it's always been a district committee, so that's why.
Okay.
Item ten point zero four, discuss and approve digital newspaper subscriptions. Um, we have chosen four digital newspaper subscriptions. The Albany Times Union, which is a hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-one cents a year, the Daily Freeman, one hundred and forty-four dollars, the Hudson Valley One, forty dollars a year, and the New York Times, seventy-three dollars and twenty cents a year. Um, am I gonna? May I have a first? We're just to dis- Yes, okay, alright, can we vote on it? May I have a first, please? Trustee Lynch, second, trustee Bishop, all in favor? Valerie, are you not in favor? Okay, so that's unanimous, thank you. Item ten point zero five, a donation from Matt and Jenny Jared. Recommended action, the superintendent recommends the acceptance of a donation totaling twenty-five hundred dollars in cash from Matt and Jenny Jared to support the nature trail at the Bennett Elementary School and recommends approval to increase the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget line A two one one zero four three one dash zero three supplemental by twenty-five hundred dollars. May I have a first, please? Trustee Lynch, a second. Trustee Ramondo, all in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Item ten point zero six, donation from the Neil Grant Perpetual Fund. The superintendent recommends acceptance of a donation totaling two thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars in cash from the Neil Grant Perpetual Fund for the youth of Shandaken to purchase Antioa varsity football uniforms and recommends approval to increase the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget line, A two eight five five four three one point dash zero one supplemental by two thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. May I have a first, please? Trustee Story, second, trustee Bishop, comments, questions, anyone?
I wanna thank everybody that came out and played at the golf tournament this year. It has cha- they changed the name of it. Um, but it's the Neil Grant Perpetual F- Fund, but in the years past, it's been for my father-in-law and this year it was for Paul Pentnato and Carl LaRiche was played for him in Monroe. So, the next ten years, the next nine years will continue for him in their name.
Excellent. May I have a, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you, and uh, thank you to all of the donors who helped Antioa be as special as it is. Item eleven point zero one, the board hereby approves item numbers eleven point zero two to eleven point zero nine. May I have a first, please? Trustee Bishop, second. Trustee Ramondo, comments, questions? On the consent agenda? Schedule U?
I uh reviewed schedule U and I saw it was in order.
All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Item eleven point zero two. So, item twelve point zero one, the Board of Education hereby approves the I C Rs and contracts in items twelve point zero two to twelve point zero five. May I have a first, please? Trustee Story, second. Trustee Bishop, questions or comments? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Item thirteen, cell phone assignments. The Board of Education hereby approves the following cell phone assignments as listed below. May I have a first, please? Trustee Bishop, second, trustee Story. Comments, questions?
I could just add, um, this is changing due to people um, who have resigned. So, uh, this will continue to be revised as we hire new employees as well.
Thank you. All in favor? Just, trustee Lynch, do you have a question?
Apologies, um, quick question for the superintendent. Um, any um, uh, does this have anything to do with uh, lack of access um, at Venetia Elementary School? We talked about the potential for uh Mi-Fi situation, Mi-Fi uh, I'm forgetting, access point.
This is not related to Venetia, this is separate.
Thank you, okay.
Any other questions or comments? No? All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. School meal prices, thirteen point zero two, the board hereby authorizes school meal prices for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. May I have a first, please? Trustee Bishop, second, trustee Ramondo, any comments, questions?
I just wanna reiterate, um, as I had, let the board know, our elementary buildings are still um, being provided with breakfast and lunch at no cost. That is not related to COVID or any COVID relief funding. That is the community eligibility provision which um, is uh, related to our free and reduced lunch percentages within those buildings. At this point, the middle high school is not eligible for that program yet. Uh, it may be in the coming near future, but for now, it's not. And so, our school lunch manager actually looked at it and has opted to maintain our prices at the level that they were at prior to COVID, so that um, hopefully, it is affordable for our families.
Thank you for that. I, I do have a question regarding that. If um, if the numbers change in the middle of the year, are we able to shift? Or do we need to wait for the next school year to provide free lunch?
I believe we would need to wait for the next school year, but I can confirm that.
Okay, thank you. Just expressing my disappointment with the federal government that this funding has not been continued um, in a district like ours. It, it makes a huge difference. We are very close to having the number that, that would allow us to have free lunch. Um, and that's not necessarily a good thing, um, although free lunch would be. Okay, all in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Item thirteen point zero three, the Board of Education authorizes the change to the board meeting schedule to reflect the correct date of the budget adoption and the Vosse Countywide Vote. May I have a first, please? Trustee Story, second, trustee Bishop. Comments, questions? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Item fourteen point zero one, does anyone have old business to discuss? Trustee Ramondo?
I would like, if this is where I'm supposed to say this, so bear with me, to give an update to the public regarding the election and where the res- where we stand with the Commissioner event and all of that, please.
Yeah, Superintendent McLaren?
Unfortunately, um, we were told that it was possible, that we could hope for um, word from the Commissioner by the end of the month uh, of July. We have not yet heard anything. So, we are still in a holding pattern, waiting for the Commissioner to authorize a revote. Thank you.
Any other old business? Trustee Story? Okay, any other old business? No, okay, trustee Story with new business.
Um, I would like to suggest the board go and visit the West Hurley property. I think, I think I'm the only board member here that has ever stepped foot on it. And um, but hasn't seen its recent condition and um, if we could get this done before our next meeting, for those who can go, um, I think it's going to be very in uh, lightning and give, give us, give new board members an idea of what the building and conditions are in, so we have some knowledge.
Other board members' opinions about going to visit West Hurley?
I'd be happy to go.
Great. Yeah, I, we do have a meeting with the attorney at our next board meeting, so it would be helpful to get that done beforehand. Amanda, is that something that you could try to organize for us?
No problem. I can talk to our, our Director of Facilities on Thursday and find a good time for everyone to go.
Terrific, and, and when you do organize that, if you could give board members a couple of options uh, for Mr. Hardress, that would be terrific. Um, and see if we can get this organized before two weeks from now.
Yep, absolutely.
Um, trustee Sherry, would it be possible to, also, is there any existing documents that could sort of give us a Cliff Notes on what's gone hand and where we are? Beyond that?
They're in, they're on board docs. There's a file of it in-
Everything is on board docs.
In um, exact content and draft form for West Hurley.
However, maybe Superintendent McLaren could just provide a succinct kind of update as to where things were and where they are. You know, like a one paragraph or even to uh, I mean, I know it's a big ask, but just to kind of go over, you know, who we're working with, who the attorneys are.
Some of the very basics.
Some of the very basics, I think would be really helpful for our new board members.
Okay, yeah.
Does that sound doable?
Yes.
Okay.
I might work with the attorney on, because I'm missing a little bit.
Last year, yeah.
A little short-term amnesia there. Um, but yeah, it's been a long and involved process, but, and if you, if you get, some of the documents that are, that are up there for your reference are really lengthy and it was hard for the, the person who was putting them together to, I mean, they are in categories, but it's a lot. So, I appreciate that you would like sort of a, a summary, high level.
Honestly, I've been here the whole time and it's gonna be easier to listen to the attorneys, to figure, to turn around and because it is that much backing forth and- and because it is that much back and forth and.
Right, I would almost recommend um, letting Victoria put together a, a quick summary before our next meeting and then hearing what the attorneys have to say, and then if something resonates with you, going back onto Board Docs and, and looking at the documentation, so that you're not muddying your own waters. Okay, any other new business? Trustee Bishop?
I'm, I'm not sure if it's new business, but I'm just um, wondering if we would consider um, adding committee reports to each board meeting and if there isn't a report to give, we can just say we don't have a report, but you know.
It, it should have been added back on to the committee, or to the agenda. I think we stopped doing it when we were doing remote and it was only when our meetings were still remote, we weren't giving full, we weren't meeting. So I know it definitely needs to go back on to the agenda from, for future meetings.
Yeah, and then if there isn't a report, we can just say, we can pass.
Amanda, can you, thank you. Awesome, thank you Amanda. Um, two pieces of new business that I've got is that uh, the Table at Woodstock is involved in doing a pretty comprehensive um, back-to-school drive. Our elementary schools are mostly taken care of um, with products that the district is able to supply for them. However, um, in my experience, our older children are the ones who need the most in order to get back to school um, in an effective way. So we are currently um, doing a drive for school supplies. Both the Fenicia Library and the Woodstock Library are accepting donations until around August fifteenth and our location in Boyceville will accept donations as well. Um, please think about older kids. I, I tend to get a lot of stuff for young kids when what they need are lunchboxes and backpacks, but the older kids are the ones who need the actual supplies. We are also doing a personal hygiene supply drive for the closet that we maintain here at the middle school, high school. And any items along those lines would be helpful. And then my last piece of new business is just a reminder to board members to please check your emails, um, communicate effectively and as quickly as you're able, and if you are unable to communicate for any reason for any period of time, to please let somebody else know, um, either myself or Cindy, so that we are not trying to communicate um, when there's no one there to communicate with. I think it's important that if we're going to stay on top of all of this, that we need to make sure that we are checking emails and responding in a timely fashion to one another. I think that'll help.
Um, I'm going to say something, when people are on vacation, they need to be able to be let alone and left on vacation and not constantly um, having told they have to check emails and stuff like that.
Yeah, for sure. If, if somebody's on vacation and does not want to be bothered while they're on vacation, then they just need to express that to the board and then they can make the decision whether or not they want to be left off of email chains altogether, or if they want to check it when they get back. Um, I think that's completely fair and is the way that it should be. And as a reminder, we have a retreat with Dr. Bill on the eighteenth in the morning here at the high school um, in central administration at eight thirty in the morning, I believe. Everybody? Yeah, I think it's eight thirty to twelve was, was the last, that, that he communicated. Um, as soon as I have an agenda from him, I will send it out to everyone. Anyone else?
I have one piece of new business. Um, I'd like to understand in regards to our Spanish-speaking families, regarding when public be heard, that we have the opportunity to have a translator here and available, so that these families feel comfortable sharing their needs and their concerns with us. I just don't know the logistics of that, so I'm, I'm presenting it as a possible opportunity to be as inclusive as possible.
Yeah, Megan, do you want to present that as an RFI? Um, or are you, are just wanting to kind of share the idea? What, what's your preference?
You tell me.
So I think it depends. I think if you're asking the district what our capability is, um, and what we have available and, and how, what the potential logistics are, then that would be an RFI. If you're kind of just spitballing an idea or saying something that you would like to have happen and putting it out for discussion, then that would be.
So I guess it lives in both. It are, would the board agree that it would be a positive thing to have something like that available?
It would definitely be positive. I, I would probably suggest that you pose it as an RFI and we can do it right now as an RFI, so that we can understand better what the logistics would be, um, who we might have available within district and what the cost would be and kind of what the whole thing would look like.
Okay, sounds good.
Superintendent McLaren, does that work for you as an RFI?
Um, I guess I'd like a little more clarity on, on your, your thought. Um, because public be heard, we don't usually know necessarily ahead of time if someone wants to come. And so would you be looking for um, someone to be here and waiting or?
I feel like that's something we could talk about as to what would work best. If we, if our families know that it's an option, we could perhaps ask them to let us know in advance, you know, maybe by the Friday before, or something where we could set some parameters around it so that they know that that opportunity will be available. So we don't necessarily have to pay for a translator to sit here with us, you know, during this entire time if no one wants to be here, but it should still be an option put out to the public. So I think with parameters around it and everyone understanding and us communicating that effectively, that it would just al- show that we want to be inclusive of that percent of our population.
I think so.
Okay.
And I, I think there are services as well that we could have a, an arrangement with. Um, I'm assuming that they work outside of the regular workday because people have needs outside the nine to five day. So we could certainly look into how to, how to try and navigate that.
Okay.
And, I mean, maybe depending on the service, maybe we don't need to ask people to sign up ahead of time. I feel like that's a real imposition on one set of our community.
Yeah.
To say, like, if you're going to come, you have to tell us ahead of time. I'd, I'd love to be able to not have that.
I would prefer that as well, so I want to make it as available as possible because that means we're inclusive.
Right.
And compassionate to everyone's needs.
So I wonder if there might be some technology that could help us with this? Because then we're not just talking about Spanish-speaking families, but.
Correct, yes.
There's a phone service that we used in um, special education and for special ed meetings and five oh four meetings where um, basically the district has a um, a contract with a company and a, any, anybody could call in um, and request any language. And you get a human being who speaks that language and that person will be on with you and um, it could be put on speakerphone. I don't know how it would work in, in a situation like this, but I would, I would imagine there's a way to make it work um, so that a person of any, any um, home language could communicate with us and we would be able to understand and, and hear what they have to say.
That sounds perfect.
One last piece of, uh, go ahead, Sarah. Can be on uh, old business or RFIs or even new business if you want to.
Thanks. In uh, in our, in the request for information, I was, um, as we talked about earlier, the importance of communication at the start of the school year. I wondered if we could better understand perhaps by building, because I assume it's different per building, but just overall, my request would just be what communication already goes to families, particularly new families? I know, for example, like we talked about that calendar, um, you know, there are other things that just go out to everybody and I'm just wondering if we could have a better sense of what does go out district-wide, what goes out per building? Maybe there's something different per teacher. I'm not, I'm not sure, but I, I was just wondering if we could get a better sense of that so that we can anticipate, uh, or we'd have more information in terms of almost an audit before we go into this communications meeting.
I think in general, we, we can get some of the information that goes, but some of it we're not going to have in that timeframe um, with vacations and with teachers not necessarily being in. But we can, we can certainly gather some of what goes out.
So what I, what I was hearing, Sarah, if, if you could clarify this for me, um, are you interested in understanding a, a general sense of what kind of communication goes out by, by building level? But you're not asking what each teacher is going to send home, correct? Because that would not be within our scope. Um, if you're asking kind of like, like I received already medical update forms for both of my boys. Um, so there is some information, I think, that goes out on a building level that's rote. Are you looking for that or are you just kind of trying to get a sense of what the grade levels communicate generally with parents and how?
Yeah, thanks Emily. I, what I'm thinking of is, you know, what is the, um, I, I recognize some, some individuals take on more than others, but what is the sort of bare minimum that we send out to all families about um, how, you know, welcoming them into the new school year? I'm, I'm thinking, for example, it might be different, the reason I mentioned teachers, it might be different for new families coming into a kindergarten or something versus, you know, others. But I'm just wondering if there's a, a standard package that we send out every year at the start of the school year about, you know, how, how this, we talked about this a little bit, but also, you know, how to navigate the school, who, what is the chain of command in the school, what is it, where's the safety plan live? All of those important things that I think a lot of families, and I, I certainly picked it up in this um, survey, which I recognize is just ten percent of our population, but thinking about some of the things they said where they just had, you know, very little visibility on where to go or how to get information. And I'm just curious if we could at least start with the baseline, what are we currently doing? Um, and then make sure that um, we have a better sense before we engage Valerie or others, um, other professionals about new i- new initiatives. It's always good to know what, where we are currently.
Yeah, I think uh, trustee Sherry has a good point. There, there is a certain level of communication that we do at the district level and, and we um, that is broad and general. Uh, I think some of the, some of the building level communication may be general in that nature, but a lot of it is very specific and is um, at the discretion of the building administrators and the teachers. I think from what I'm hearing you say, some of the things that you're looking for really are more general in terms of navigating your way through some of these things. So we can try and gather those things that kind of fit in that category and start there.
Okay.
Trustee Story? No?
Um, one question that I have um, under new business is, will we be sending home a paper calendar for all of our, yes, so the answer is yes, there will be a paper calendar?
There will be a paper calendar. It's being um, collated right now, I believe. Sharon Stomaticus in the business office.
We are hoping to get it to the printer either by the end of this week, the beginning of next week, and they have told us less than ten days to be printed. We're holding them to that.
Well, I think you're going to have a lot of happy parents out there, Ms. Leclaire, because uh, that was quite the point of contention last year, that not every family received a paper calendar and it was quite the um, quite the upset for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. So I'm, I'm very glad to hear that we will be sending those home. And then um, I forgot to bring this up earlier, but last year we had made the decision that the Communication Committee would be the committee, as a committee, would be answering general emails from the public. Um, I think we need to decide if we are going to continue doing that or um, we had, we had different ways that emails from the public were answered. Um, the district clerk would send an acknowledgement and if we're going to continue with that, I would ask that the Communication Committee um, bring back to the board some wording, you know, how, how we would like the commu- the district clerk to, to actually respond so that the um, the person sending the email understands that, that everyone on the board has, has received the letter and that it's being considered and um, if further response is warranted, that they will get one. So that's part one. Um, and then we had made the decision to have the Communications Committee answering those emails after running the response by the board as a whole. So someone on the Communicati- Communications Committee was crafting a response. It was being sent out to the board. There was a window given in the email, like, you know, the first, yeah, the first four people to respond would be a quorum in agreement and then the letter would go out. Um, so the question is, do we want to continue with that practice? Or do we want to try something new?
I, as, do we, I think we should for right now, continue what we did with last year because it seemed to work. Um, and it's not a quorum. We're reading the emails at different times, so we're never forming a quorum. That's an extremely very important point.
So that we have consensus. So if there are four people, then we, we are creating consensus and then the email can go out. So that way we are not waiting for the entirety of the board to respond, which can take quite a while, um, in the interest of time.
My only concern is, um, and it might not be well-founded, but my, my gut reaction to this is that I worry about Cindy, or tr- sorry, trustee Bishop, because um, the rest of the committee is brand new. So if we are in charge of, you know, having to craft a response, I think we're going to continuously ask trustee Bishop for help. And I would just propose that maybe we think differently about it and I don't know, there hasn't been a lot of communication over the summer, but there will be, and I, I would just, I just want to be thoughtful about that.
My suggestion would be that um, I can take the lead on it. For start, you know, to, to get us started when, uh, when we do start receiving emails. And then um, you know, once you and trustee Wallace are up and running, then you know, you guys can take over some of that uh, responsibility as well.
But also remember, you're not going to be sending it out on your own without all, most of the board members looking at it and also adding our words or taking stuff away. So it's not just the Communication Committee. It's once you guys figure it out and then
Right.
the rest of the board will read it.
Right, but the Communications Committee would draft it and then, you know, then send it out for approval and revision, well, revision and approval. So it, it is, it does fall in the Communications Committee um, first. You know, but that's fine. I mean, we, we, we do have to effectively communicate and, and if, if the, if the uh, community is reaching out to the board, we do, I, I feel like it's our responsibility to respond and, you know, with more than just a one sentence, you know, yeah.
And then there's a lot of times that the board will receive emails, but it's not the board's purview to answer. So then the superintendent would, because that would be her job.
And oftentimes in that case, the response is just that. Um, the superintendent, you know, this letter is better intended for the superintendent um, and you should expect to hear from the superintendent. So that, that we are not not responding, I think is, is very important. Um, and also remembering that uh, trustee Wallace is a writer and uh, may be able to do these things fairly, effectively and well-communicated. So are we tentatively in agreement and we can always revisit this if it becomes too much for the Communication Committee?
Fine.
Fine, okay, terrific. Okay, the next meeting will be August sixteenth, right? Not the seventeenth? Correct? Six o'clock and that will be at, here? Okay, motion to adjourn the meeting. Trustee Story, second. Trustee Bishop?